The 2024, uh, excuse me. August 24, 2023, meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will please come together. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Trebowser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted as follows: On January 11, 2023, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Ms. Anderson, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client advice. Any information regarding a closed-session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson. Do I have a second? Second. All right. I have a motion by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Trebowser. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Carried. Board of retirees, closed session will endeavor to be out around 6:30 or thereafter. Thank you. Please rise to salute the flag in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of its citizens, one nation, united in one vision, under God, in this world, with the good and evil, just as it is with us.
Do I have a motion to reconvene?
No motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Carried. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Sedana.
Here.
Mr. Trebowser.
Here.
Mr. Velez.
Here.
Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notices of bids received.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. No bids were received.
Okay. Thank you. All right. As is usual, the Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public, and seeks to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda item and item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. Welcome to come to the podium, any member of the public.
Is this the open or we might ask the agenda item?
No, this is the agenda item section. Okay. All right. No members of the public wish to speak at this time? Superintendent's agenda we'll move on to. Dr. Massimino, do you have any recommendations?
Mr. President, I have eight items to present to the Board.
Do I have a motion to the superintendent's agenda?
So motion.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Saying none, roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Thank you. Policy and planning agenda. Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following six items and move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Anybody? I'll just add one. One of our agenda items this evening is a correction to the Board's student calendar for this upcoming school year. We had to rearrange some dates relative to the snow days. If they are not used, which days do we select from first? Very minor correction, but please, parents, note that as we get into the spring. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Thank you. Curriculum Committee, Mr. Trebowser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, presents the following 37 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Trebowser. I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser, seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Saying none, roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Excellent. Finance agenda, Mr. Trebowser.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Saying none at this time? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Excellent. Technology, Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Technology Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Excellent. I have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Sedana, seconded by Mr. Trebowser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Saying none, roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Thank you. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator and Board Secretary's office presents the following five items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sedana. I have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Sedana, seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Saying none, roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Excellent. Transportation, Mr. De La Pietro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary present the following four items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro, seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Saying none again, roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Personnel, Mr. De La Pietro. Got you there.
Mr. President.
Let's look at the negotiation one.
Negotiations.
Oh! Oh! All right.
I thought you were going to go back to that.
Got it. I'll jump into that first. We'll hold off on you, Mr. De La Pietro. We'll jump to Mr. Velez on negotiations.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Board of Education Committee for Negotiations presents the following two items, and I move for the adoption of foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Velez. I have a motion by Mr. Velez. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Velez, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Saying none, roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
I'll be abstaining on all items.
Mr. Harris.
Same for me. I will be abstaining on all items.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
I abstain on all items.
And Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, now. Mr. De La Pietro, are you ready for personnel?
We're ready.
Excellent. Mr. De La Pietro.
The Personnel Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources presents the following 25 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Mr. De La Pietro has motioned. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I heard a lot of voices there. I have a motion by Mr. De La Pietro, and I'll go with Ms. Bourdain as a second. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Saying none, roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro.
I'll be abstaining on items 14 and 15, yes, and all others.
Mr. Harris.
Yes. Excuse me. I'll be voting on the agenda with the exceptions of items number 14 and 15, which I'll be abstaining on.
Thank you. Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser.
I will abstain on items 14 and 15, yes, on all other items.
And Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Turn to our legal department. Hope, do you have any recommendations for us?
Not this evening.
All right. Thank you. Is there any old business that should be brought before the attention of the Board? Saying none. Is there any new business that should be brought before the attention of the Board? Members? No? I just want to give one shout-out. At the conclusion of the telecast, Mr. Martins and the TV 35 crew has taken the district's production of the list of colleges, trade schools, the military academies, or military branches that our class of 2023 is enlisting, enrolling, or moving on to, you know, this September or this summer. It's a robust list. I know one of the members, I think Ms. Anderson mentioned it last meeting, that's going to be on the telecast for everyone to see. It's also up on the district's Facebook page, as well as the district website. It's a list that we're very proud of, and I know after 13 years of schooling kindergarten through 12th grade, that list, I think, is most reflective of the success and the types of students that were able to graduate from our school district, ranging from going directly into the workforce, going off to trade school, serving in the U.S. Armed Forces, or going to a range of universities, including some of the very top universities in the world. So congratulations to you, Dr. Massimino, and the rest of your team here for producing wonderful graduates, and of course, as always, we wish those graduates a successful career and life after Woodbridge Township. We will... Any further comments before moving on to the public? Saying none. We will now open the meeting for public comment. If you wish to say something, please come to the microphone, provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside. Again, members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation 1100D. No response will be given until you have fully completed your comments, so as not to interrupt your five-minute opportunity to speak. If you please come to the microphone.
I was John Vertari of Woodbridge. I was expecting a lot of people because beginning of school, and I'm proud of you people over here because I know you're doing your best. You always do the best. But again, as you know, the world is changing, and you're required to do more. We all have to require to do more. It's not up to you, it's up to us, too. We want to carry the burden. You people are here, don't get paid, of course, we know that. But again, it's very important if we start a new year, to be a successful year, and of course, it's our children that are most important to us, all of us. The last question is, I just came from Europe, that we're kind of lagging behind the rest of the world. Why don't we try to do something, the rest of the world don't do it? Usually we do it. It's not going to the space, that's one thing, but do something that works while we try to break it down. And I'm bringing back again, safety of our children. I don't think any is more protective to our children, the parents, grandparents, loved ones. And we all love the kids. But if it's children, it's different. You guys are a little bit different. And I think it's kind of a... Do you deprive the parents and grandparents, all those people that have those kids, to do something for them? They don't want to let go. It's up to them to raise them, if they are, the grandparents, or things like that. You know, we send them to school to teach something that we don't know, that you people know, the teachers know. We've got beautiful teachers, we're good teachers. But again, because somebody makes the state laws, some kind of thing, don't experience something because it's not a making something that's going to, if you don't work, you're going to crash it down, or make a donut, doesn't work, you make another donut. If you ruin the kid's life. And we are, fortunately, we do something, we interfere with God, nature, upbringings, so state the hell out of it, so to speak. I don't want to say it kind of more, but again, we're all proud of you. I know what you've got to work with. It's hard. It's going to be harder, because what's come to this country, pressure from the rest of the world, it's hard to understand. They're not talking about America like this before. They take it seriously. They think some of this, thinking we are clowns over here, what we're doing. But again, being first is one thing, but being first in something that's not right, but do not try with the kids, with the children. I talked to Councilman Anderson, and he told me about, he said, "You know, John, some kids don't have what other kids have, parents, grandparents, things like that." I said, "I understand it. That's where you come in. If the kid needs something, you're going to find out, you professionals, you're going to find out what they need, what they need. You can sense it with every kid. Is it a boy or a girl, or something happened at home, suicidal, whatever you want to call it? You're going to feel it first before anybody. We understand it. But don't interfere with the people that do hard to take kids to school, educate and pay for it, dress them up, clean them up. You see who is neglected, who is not. So I don't want to pay any more attention to it." Couple more, a couple weeks ago, I brought stuff over here about Guns Hertz, the book, I'll give you the old lady over here, and I don't know if you read it or not. Safety, schools have safety. I know you're going to talk about safety. You talk about safety of children. It's not just being run by the car. We probably got more guns in this country than cars. And guns are evil, we know that, but we got them. We don't want to let go. And kids are curious. They will somehow, now and then, I was one of them. Unfortunately, I was a school player, supposed to do something, but I knew gun was loaded. But that's so, make people aware of it. What hurts, it's not just the cars, it's the guns, it's drugs, it's whatever, matches, cigarettes, whatever you want to call it. So something like that, we understand it. But again, we got our kind of districts stand up. People in Melissa County got a different situation in the Hunter County. They think what we're doing, it's a joke. I don't want to take more of your time, I don't want to make any comments, I don't want to do any answers over here, but I would just say, we are proud of you, we're proud of our teachers, especially the teachers. You've got great teachers. What I feel, what they feel, they're not allowed to teach what they went to school to teach. They told what to teach. Nobody wanted to interfere with the profession where they know it best. You can make the law, what you call a law, and change the rules. They're there to teach. So leave it up to them, leave it up to you. I don't think government or anybody should interfere with what you do in Melissa County or Woodbridge School or District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Lund, Hope Lund. Hi. Hi. Just to offer context for my question, I'm going to bring up a headline. Portland School District workshops entitled "Equitable Grading Practices" that outlaw zeros for cheating or missing work. The district's new bias-resistant grading initiative argues that teachers should assign grades based on valid evidence of a student's content knowledge, which is reasonable, not on evidence, though, that is likely to be influenced by a teacher's implicit bias or reflect the student's environment. Teachers who offer extra credit, give zeros for cheating, penalize late work, and dock students for poor attendance or classroom behavior may be guilty of bias. I'm tossing that out there because there's a lot of talk around equity throughout the country and in New Jersey as well. I want to know if you agree, is that possibly where we're heading in this district? Another headline that I want to give context to my question to. Two top Democrats in the legislature issued a statement regarding recent action by the State Board of Education in regard to equality and equity. And here it is. "It is unfortunate that the State Board of Education doesn't coordinate with policymakers before they take actions that may affect school districts throughout our state. We expected better communication with them. We believe that families should have a voice in what is taught to their children, and as long as we have a say over the matter, they will continue to. And as always, children deserve subject matter that is age-appropriate, posted clearly and transparently for families to review and free from politics." I want to see if that is a statement coming from our two top Democrats in the state and the legislature that this Board can get behind. Last question. From State Board of Education Transgender Policy Number 5657, which has been in effect, I believe it was issued in 2018, and this is right from that guidance. "If a student has expressed a preference to be called by a name other than their birth name, permanent student records containing the student's birth name should be kept in a separate confidential file. This file should only be shared with appropriate school staff after consultation with the student. A separate file containing records bearing the student's chosen name may also be kept." Does Woodbridge keep two sets of files, one for that is available to parents and one that is hidden from parents? Those are my three questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lund. You referenced what Portland School District is doing, I assume Portland, Oregon.
In the name of equity, they are claiming that it is inequitable.
Sure, sure. Understood. As Chair of Policy and Planning, we have not discussed anything to that level. I'll turn to Dr. Massimino if there's any further comment, if we're heading in that direction.
Yeah, I couldn't speak to the different apparatus or variables that they consider when they're talking. I don't want to respond out of context, Mr. Lund, I haven't had a chance to read it. On its surface, extra credit, that's a good thing. Allowing a student to make up work, that's a good thing. So I would be remiss to comment overall in a comprehensive fashion without reading it, but some of the items you mentioned, we have a set policy that has been in place for quite some time. I don't think anybody here would argue that some of the things you mentioned are good things. Like I said, extra credit or making up work. The goal for Woodbridge Township, and I couldn't speak for anybody else, is to try to give students every effort to be successful in our educational setting. So, you know, anything counter to that, I would say would warrant a further discussion because the idea here is to get kids to be successful, and if they need to make up work to do that, or we can offer extra credit, I, on its surface, would struggle to see how those would be bad things.
Got you. May I just, as a context of a teacher, may I just say that they're claiming that even if they don't make up the work, they should get at least a 50, which is reminiscent of policies in New Jersey because of No Child Left Behind and IEPs. reminiscent of policies in New Jersey because of No Child Left Behind and IEPs. There's often three marking periods where they can't get less than a sixty or a failing grade, regardless of the amount of work they do or don't do. And I think that's kind of seems to be the overarching trend, and I think that is a recipe for disaster. They kind of game the system. Even in the fourth marking period, where you can give them a failing grade, they're still often pushed through the system because they want to have a certain amount of students graduating on time to maintain their reputation with the government.
Yeah, I couldn't speak to the rationale. Our policy's been on the books for a while. I've been here two years, so I can say I haven't overseen any policy change. I think it's been in place for some time now. I wouldn't get in front of me to reference it.
Right. And any policy that this board were to adopt, we have two readings. So certainly any changes to our policies would be through the open public process, as would be typical. Your other question concerning the two top legislators relative to the State Board of Education's recent vote. We talked about this the other night, I think in the Curriculum Committee, and to date, Dr. Massimino has instructed us that we have not received particular guidance relative to DOE in that regard. I did want to offer you, I hate to tell a member of the public, go somewhere else, but if you ever wanted to take up your concerns with the Department of Education, I went to their website, which I'm sure you've been to. They have a meeting coming up on September the sixth. You could register to speak and testify at their meeting. It's two o'clock on, again, September the sixth, and then another meeting on October four. You go online, and the deadline for any, whether yourself, Mr. Lund, or another member of the public, you just have to register by August the 31st on their state website.
I've been to one of their meetings during the summer when I was off, but unfortunately, I'm starting a new school.
Okay.
Won't be available during the hours that they have these available.
Sure, sure. Yeah. I know there's a phone number on the website. I don't know if there's a way to submit written testimony, but if you want it to be heard before the State Department of Education, as they work on guidance for all school districts which to follow, I would encourage you or any member of the public to do so.
Thank you.
And then finally, your last question was relative to State Board of Education policy issued and promulgated in 2018 relative to two files. I couldn't speak to that. Dr. Massimino or Hope, do you have a response to their compliance with that law?
Well, I would simply say that the district has to comply with the law. Whether there are any such students, I couldn't comment. But what I can say is the district is obligated at this juncture to comply with the law.
If I can add to that, just to maybe give some additional information, Mr. Lund. Our system is online, right? It's a digital system. Every parent has access to their child's, I'm going to say portfolio as a comprehensive term. So they can see their report card, any in terms, their attendance, things of this nature. So if there is any information, that's the parent portal. So anything that we would change in our system, it's one system. We can't have, you know, two different names associated with it at the same time, right? So it can be one name, and then it can be another name, but that's still the same student ID, and the parent would have had access the entire time.
There's no separate confidential file because unless the student releases that to the parent.
Yet. Our files are digital, so I couldn't speak to, and I don't have any experience with any students that would have separate files. So if there is, I wouldn't be familiar with it, not to say it doesn't exist.
Right. Because it can exist by policy.
It absolutely can. I don't have any, you know, personal experience with seeing the separate files, but everything is digital. So if there's a name just in fifth grade and then a different name in sixth grade, whatever's on that parent portal, a parent would have had access to view the entire time.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good evening, everybody. Carlo Fazio of Woodbridge. I was here last meeting in regards to transportation, primarily for St. James. But while I was here at that last meeting, there was a comment or concern brought up about the restrooms, and that the boys could use the female restrooms. And the comment made by council was if a female feels uncomfortable, that she could use a nurse's restroom and/or a gender-neutral restroom. Wouldn't it make more sense that that child, the male who wants to use the female restroom, use a gender-neutral or a nurse's restroom as opposed to the child that feels uncomfortable when a member of the opposite sex is in their bathroom? And that struck me as kind of a common sense response that I had when I was sitting here. That's one thing. Also with Mr. Lund, when we were, last week, was speaking about, I'm sorry, about busing again. Comment was made, or the policy was that K through six or eight are not bused with high school students because of safety concerns. I believe that was the reasoning. Were the concerns with, again, a member of the opposite sex using a bathroom? Were the concerns there? In high school, there are students that are eighteen, I would imagine seniors, and then there are ones who are freshmen who are obviously under that age. Are there any limitations to that policy?
Is that all of the questions?
That's the crux of it, yeah.
Okay. Your first question was concerning bathroom use.
Right.
I won't even take a stab at it, just out of familiarity.
I'm going to work backwards, if that's okay, Mr. Fazio. The policy for the bus is a Woodbridge policy, right? So that's something we set. The law that you're referring to that establishes using a bathroom of your identity is a state law. So I'll defer to council to speak more about the legalese of that.
Sure.
Yeah, and it just is exactly correct. You can still make the offer, but it can't be required under the current status of state law.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
You can make the offer, but it cannot be required under the current status of state law.
The offer?
To the transgender
Right.
student to use the gender-neutral or nurse's office. You can make that offer, but you cannot require it under the current status of state law.
Okay. So again, a female using that restroom, pretty much, her rights don't really count as much because if she's uncomfortable, it doesn't matter, pretty much.
That's not what I said.
No, no. I'm not saying what you said, but pretty much. So if my daughter's in the bathroom and she's not comfortable, she then has to change whatever she's doing. You know what I mean? Like, it's, I mean, it's not something that, obviously, I've grown up in the township. I've been here for a long time. And this was a conversation that I've never had to have, obviously. It's something, is this policy, I guess, a couple years old, or?
It's the New Jersey Law Against Discrimination.
And how long has that been with the restroom use?
Ten years, maybe. Maybe ten years or so. The law changed a series of years ago. It includes gender, identity, and expression. So those were categories that were added to the Law Against Discrimination.
And my concern is just for, you know, our children who aren't comfortable. And again, last week, I believe, or last meeting, it was established that there is no set criteria for a student to, you know, there's no background, or there's no medical, or there's nothing to say that, you know, tomorrow he could walk in and say, you know, for today, identify as a different gender and just use the restroom, right? So it's just, it seems like it's a very, it's, I mean, there's not much criteria to it. It's just you walk in, you say it, and you can use the restroom.
I believe the superintendent also said that the first stop would be to refer that student to a therapist when they are having those types of issues.
Yeah, to be candid with Ms. Fazio, I've had this conversation with a lot of parents. I've lived in town my whole life as well. So, you know, a lot of conversations, and people are going to have opinions, and everybody's entitled to them. I'm not here to disagree with them. The difficult part about our position as central office administrators, as, you know, and the Board of Education members here, is we are obligated to follow the state law. So whether there are questions about if it's common sense, if there's questions about how it should be applied, those unfortunately are not questions that we can respond to the same way I couldn't respond to, you know, why do I have to go sixty-five into sixty-five, right? Whether I agree with it or not, that is the state law, and there are penalties if we don't follow it. So, you know, to echo Mr. Harris's sentiments earlier, I never want to send somebody somewhere else to have an argument. Unfortunately, it's a state law that we are obligated to follow, and that is an issue of the legislature in terms of...
I just know there are a lot of parents who have these concerns. A lot of people don't want to speak out, of course. A lot of people, a lot of people are nervous to come up or have jobs that are related to the township and whatnot, or don't want to be labeled as something that they're not. I think it's just a basic concern as a parent. Like, if you have a daughter or, you know, who's using the restroom, and most kids are nervous using a restroom in general, public restrooms. A lot of kids don't even want to use them. But now you're adding another element to it. I just think it's something that maybe could be talked about more, or if there's any way that we can address it, maybe have those gender-neutral areas or nurse's office and try and work something out through that to make all people comfortable.
And totally hear what you're saying. The last thing we ever want to do is invalidate anybody's opinion or concerns. You know, I have a son, I have a daughter, so I have this discussion with, you know, parents from sports teams and schools and just neighborhoods. So I hear you, and it's not something that is not, I don't have frequently, I have those conversations frequently. I get it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Are there any other comments or questions from the public? Seeing none. Is there a need for another closed session? Nope. I'm sorry. I don't need to read that one. The chair will entertain a motion to a chair.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Treeblosser, seconded by Ms. Bourdain. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Gary, have a good evening, everybody.